Said before them, please help them discern and decide to do those things which will please you and benefit those who live and work in our beloved city of Jacksonville, Texas. I pray all of this in the most blessed and holy name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you so much. If you'll join me in the pledges first to the American flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now the Texas flag.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. Our next item is swearing in of myself as mayor, Councilman Tim McRae, and Councilwoman -elect Letitia Horace. So I guess we'll all gather and do that.
Mayor, you want us all?
Huh? I guess so. You want them one at a time? Okay. Perfect. Do I need this? I don't need this, sir.
That's for ten.
Oh, that's for ten. Okay, cool. Okay. Okay?
I, Randy Goram.
I, Randy Goram.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of the office.
Of the mayor of the city of Jacksonville.
As the mayor of the city of Jacksonville.
Of the state of Texas.
Of the state of Texas.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
Preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution.
And the laws of the United States and of this state.
And the laws of the United States and this state.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you. You bet. Councilman McRae, we will duly swear you in for three more years. Is that correct? We got to do just three more. Congratulations. Raise your right hand. In the name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Tim McRae, do solemnly swear or affirm that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city councilman of the city of Jacksonville, of the state of Texas, and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. Congratulations. And then we're going to have Councilman Hubert Robinson swear in our new councilwoman, Letitia Horace.
The name and by the authority of the state of Texas, I, Letitia Horace, do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office of city councilwoman. But that's my first test. I just failed. That's so important. That's so important. I, Letitia Horace.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of city councilwoman.
Of the office of city councilwoman.
City of Jacksonville.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
State of Texas.
The state of Texas.
And will to the best of my abilities preserve.
And will to the best of my abilities preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend the Constitution.
And defend the Constitution.
The laws of the United States.
The laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Just Hubert's next. Hubert's next. Where is that? Is that shoe that you gave me? Where is it? Oh, it's right here. Mr. Hubert, come up here. That's your turn. If y'all don't know, this is Councilman Hubert Robinson. He has given 20 years of his life to the city of Jacksonville. He has represented District One. He took the oath of office May the 13th, 2003. He served 20 years as councilmember of District One. He served three different terms as mayor and pro tem. Served as acting mayor from September the 19th, 2014, to June the 9th, 2015. Just a few accomplishments during Councilman Robinson's tenure. Public Works moved to its current location. Nichols Green Park was expanded. There was an addition of the splash pad, automated water metering system installation, construction of this new city hall, construction of the public safety complex, relocation and remodel of the Jacksonville Public Library, relocation, remodel, and expansion of the Vanishing Texas Museum, purchase of the new Civic Center, and multiple improvements and additions at Lincoln Park. So you've left us with a great chapter. So we want to present you this plaque. It says, "Hubert Robinson, Councilman, Councilmember District One, May 2003 to May 2023, Acting Mayor, September 19th, 2014 through June 9th, 2015. Your dedication to our city and the citizens of Jacksonville is respected and appreciated." Uh-oh. There you go. There you go. Great. Got it? We also... Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah.
Great. We also have a proclamation from Senator Nichols, but since he's still in session, they called me this morning. It's going to be about a week late, but it will be coming, and we will present that to you. We also have a certificate of special recognition from Congressman Jake Elsie from Washington, presented to Councilman Hubert Robinson in recognition of your 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Jacksonville. And Congressman Elsie writes, "Dear Mr. Robinson, congratulations on your 20 years of dedicated service to the city of Jacksonville. The people of Jacksonville greatly appreciate your years of service, and you will be missed tremendously. Also, it is an honor to recognize you on your 20 years served as a councilman. Your outstanding performance as a councilman, mayor, mayor pro tem has helped strengthen the relationships between our community members, while your hard work and dedication have inspired others to lead and follow your exceptional work ethic. The numerous contributions that you have made to this community will have a lasting impact for years to come. Thank you for all you have done to make Jacksonville a great city that it is. I wish you well, and I am confident that you will find success and happiness in your next life adventure. It is an honor to serve as your congressman for Texas District 6. Please do not hesitate to contact me or my office if I could ever be of assistance." And it's signed, "Jake Elsie, Member of Congress." So appreciate it. We appreciate all you've done.
Thank you all.
You bet.
Thank you.
We'll miss you.
Do I get my three minutes?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Go ahead. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I want to thank my husband and father for five minutes opportunity to be here for some years. I want to make a difference. I want to thank my wife for her support. For her, for being there from the beginning. My kids. You can see my son-in-law here from Dallas. He's one of the best son-in-law you can have anywhere. And my little niece, my other nieces. A good crowd. I'm glad you made it. My daughter and her daughter, my little granddaughter. Glad to see all y'all can make it out tonight. I want to thank my police department, the fire department for their help during these years. I know I worried you guys, but I thank you for what you done. And people downtown, thank you too. And I'd like to give also a recognition to one of my good friends who started out with me in the beginning, that was Joe Teague. He's not here, but I appreciate him. He's a great friend. And Charlie May, who everybody here know, who I put her on everything. Thank you, Charlie, for all your help. I appreciate you.
You bet.
And thank this council that I had the opportunity to work with. Going, him, the mayor, who's been a good guy, Ms. Mindy, and my good friend here who I know I just wear his legs off. Greg, he's been there to help me out. Thank you, Greg, for all you done. I will turn it here, who've become good friends. Thank you for your help. So thank you all for all what you done, and may God bless you all.
Our next item on our agenda is the nomination and election of a mayor pro tem. We do this every year to serve in the event that I'm unavailable to step in the shoes. And so I guess I would entertain a nomination for our mayor pro tem for the next year.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Tim McRae as pro tem.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and second to nominate Councilman Tim McRae as mayor pro tem. I don't think that needs a whole lot of discussion, does it?
Town, don't worry about that. Hold on.
Okay. All in favor say aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. So thank you, Tim, for doing that for us. Our next item is special presentation. Business of the Month will be presented by JEDCO President Shane Pace, and I will let you take it over.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We have a great crowd here this evening. I'd like to invite Shannon and Andy from the Holiday Inn Express and Suites. Those of you who may have stayed here in Jacksonville, hopefully you spent your evening at the Holiday Inn. I know I spent about six weeks there, and Shannon made me feel completely at home. I can tell you that if you have loved ones in town, it's a great place to send them. If you have not-so-loved ones, it's a great place to send them as well while they're visiting. But I can tell you that, you know, just working in the community, they have been just a great asset. They have been a great partner. Shannon does a lot of great things with our folks who are visiting. I know with the construction project in downtown, a lot of you experienced that. We had folks staying here for a considerable amount of time. And, you know, they really serve a broad spectrum, whether it's family members or people who are here doing work, people who are visiting, and they are really an extension of who we are here in Jacksonville. And so their hospitality and everything they do is great for Jacksonville, and I want to thank them for that. I do believe you guys are about to undergo a remodel. Is that correct? So do you want to speak a little bit about that, just really briefly? Okay, great.
Well, I'm mainly going to turn this over to Andy. He knows more in detail about this than I do. This is Andy Patel, and he is the actual general manager of our hotel. And we have been here now for nearly 13 years, and if you haven't had the opportunity to walk into the hotel, we welcome you. It's a beautiful facility. However, as with any facility that's used 24 hours a day, it has to be upgraded and updated on a regular basis. IHG believes in keeping all of their hotels up to standard, and we are now in that place. And so over the next couple of years, you will start seeing a tremendous amount of work go into this hotel, and you will see a brand-new hotel go into the place of where we currently are. So 65 rooms. We are open 24/7. Our staff are there for you 24/7, and we offer a delicious hot with famous Little Nemo cinnamon rolls. I love them. Good on the lips, bad on the hips. But, uh, they are. But, uh, yeah, so we are very excited about it. You're going to see a whole new public entity. You're going to see all new rooms, all new furnishings. So yes, if you have family coming in, if you're doing reunions, if you're doing family get-togethers, weddings, there's just a whole plethora that we invite you to come and see us for. Andy?
Well, you pretty much said it. I really can't add to that, but it is correct. It will take some time, and it's a lot of money involved, but you will see pretty much a brand-new hotel from the interior. So we're really excited with that. And like I mentioned, it will take a little bit of time, but we will get there.
Great.
Thank you so much, guys. I'm going to give you the plaque, and I'm going to take a quick photo up and say, "Thank you, guys."
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Our next two items are two resolutions. So Police Chief Williams and your group. Your group of J-Ville's finest.
J-Ville's finest.
Right. Here they come. This is a proclamation, Peace Officers Memorial Day and National Police Week. Whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers serving in communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the city of Jacksonville, Texas, and whereas the Congress and President of the United States have designated May 15th as Peace Officers Memorial Day and the week in which it falls as Police Week. Whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, more than 20,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, including four members of the city of Jacksonville's force. And whereas the International Association of Chiefs of Police has declared law enforcement officer safety and wellness a top priority, and the IACP Center for Office Safety and Wellness promotes the importance of individual, agency, family, and community safety and wellness awareness. And whereas the members of Law Enforcement Agency of Jacksonville, Texas play an essential role in safeguarding the rights and freedoms of the citizens of Jacksonville. And whereas it is important that all citizens know and understand the problem, the duties and responsibilities of their police department, and that members of our police department recognize their duty to serve the people by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence or disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression or intimidation. And now therefore I, Randy Goram, Mayor of the city of Jacksonville, formally designate May 15th through 21, 2023, as Police Week in Jacksonville, Texas, and publicly salute the service of law enforcement officers in our community and also in our communities throughout the nation. Sign this the 9th day of May 2023 by Randy Goram, Mayor. So I'll present that to you.
The next Wednesday at 10 o'clock at the Public Safety Complex, we're going to have our annual memorial service for our police officers that have been killed in line of duty last about 30 to 45 minutes. Public is certainly welcome. We'll have some refreshments afterwards. Love to see you. I'll just take this as second to say to the city council, the mayor, city manager's office, and especially the community, you have the best police department we can possibly provide you right now. We have great employees that have dedicated, some of them up to 30-plus years. They love this community, and they love y'all, and they work their hinds off every single day. I just want to go with all that.
Thank you so much. Good. Thank you. Our next proclamation is Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month proclamation. So all the guys that own a motorcycle and gals, come on up. My good friend, Robert Dye. You're the head motorcycle guy, right?
Uh, sorta.
Okay. Come around over here. That'd be great. There you go. How you doing, sir?
Good.
Great. Whereas today's society is finding more citizens involving, involved in motorcycling on the roads of our country, and whereas motorcyclists are roughly unprotected and much more likely to be injured or killed in a crash than other vehicle drivers, and whereas campaigns have helped inform riders and motorists alike on motorcycle safety issues to reduce motorcycle-related risks, injuries, and most of all fatalities through a comprehensive approach to motorcycle safety. And whereas it is the responsibility of all who put themselves behind the wheel to become aware of motorcyclists, regarding them with the same respect as any other vehicle traveling the highways of this country, and it is the responsibility of riders and motorists alike to obey all traffic rules and safety regulations, whereas urging all of our community to become aware of the inherent danger involved in operating a motorcycle, and for riders and motorists alike to give each other the mutual respect they deserve. Now therefore I, Randy Goram, Mayor of Jacksonville, Texas, do hereby proclaim the month of May 2023 as Motorcycle Safety and Awareness Month. Signed and sealed this 9th day of May 2023. So there you go. You got something to say?
I'm going to say we're getting by the air. It's raining as always, so.
Okay. Well, we look forward to listening to y'all crank them up. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. You bet. Yeah, you bet.
We want to hear you, ladies.
We will.
Thank you all. All right. Our next item is citizens' participation. This is where we set aside some time to hear concerns from our citizens. We cannot discuss any of those concerns, but did we have any turned in? Okay. Didn't have any cards turned in, so that's good. Item number 10 is our consent agenda. Of course, items under our consent agenda require little or no deliberation. You see, the approval of the minutes, just kind of housekeeping things. If there's anything on there that you want us to pull out individually and vote on, we certainly can, but if you're okay with all that's in the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve of the consent agenda.
We have a motion made by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit. Any discussion?
No.
If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries.
Okay, Mayor. The second motion is to authorize the city manager to negotiate a 12-month lease at $3,000 per month to Wesley Beard for property at 2050 slash 2016 North Jackson Street.
Okay. We have a motion. Got a second by Councilman Rob Gowan. Any discussion we need there? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. And we have, I think, one more?
In accordance with a notice delivered to Meals on Wheels in April of 19, 2022, and in order to enhance the facilities located at Hazel Tilton Park for the benefit of the public, I move that the city manager and the city attorney be authorized to take steps they deem appropriate to facilitate the departure of Meals on Wheels from the Vanishing Texana Museum building.
Okay. We have a motion. Got a second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number 11 is a quarterly financial report presented by Roxanna Brierley.
Can you just advance right here? That one? Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm happy to be here to do our first quarterly financial report. Each month, we provide a financial report, a monthly financial report in the council packet, but staff along with the finance committee thought that it would be prudent to start presenting this at the public meeting quarterly. So I could talk about finances for hours, if not days, but I'll move through this quickly. And if you have any questions or want me to slow down a little bit or anything, feel free to interrupt me. We'll start with revenues because everyone likes revenue better than expenses. Through March 31st, it's 50% of the budget year and fiscal year is complete, and total budgeted of revenue of $28.9 million is 59.2% collected, so it's ahead of budget. 94% of the collections of adware and tax have been received, so we're tracking nicely along with our property tax collections. Sales tax revenue is 50.1% received, and we're tracking almost exactly with the budget. However, we are decreased about $16,000 from prior year. Tomorrow, we will get the new amount from the comptroller, and we'll be watching that, and I'll be updating you on that. Hotel motor occupancy tax is down. It's at 43% collected, and it's about $9,000 less than last year. Water sales now are at 45% of budget, and those usually track lower the first six months of the year, and then of course, as temperatures get higher and folks need to water their yards, they pick up. Sewer sales similarly are also below budgeted expectations at 43%. Our next big category, sanitation fees, we're a little bit below at 47.7%, however, sales are up about $53,000 over last year. Ambulance fees, tracking below budget at 41.6% and below prior year by $32,000. Intergovernmental revenue has been a surprise for us. We received $308,000 in a budgeted revenue from FEMA related to winter storm Uri. ARPA revenue, although we've received $3.6 million, we can't recognize it as revenue until we actually spend for projects. So far, the council has approved $1.3 million in ARPA-funded projects, and $483,000 of those have been spent in fiscal year 2023.
and in order to enhance the facilities located at Hazel Tilton Park for the benefit of the public, I move that the City Manager and the City Attorney be authorized to take steps they deem appropriate to facilitate the departure of Meals on Wheels from the vanishing Texana Museum Building.
Okay. We have a motion. Got a second by Councilman Tim McRae. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number eleven is a quarterly financial report presented by Roxanna Brawley. Oh, there she is.
Can you just advance right here? That one. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
I'm happy to be here to do our first quarterly financial report. Each month, we provide a financial report, a monthly financial report in the council packet, but staff along with the Finance Committee thought that it would be prudent to start presenting this at the public meeting quarterly. So I could talk about finances for hours, if not days, but I'll move through this quickly, and if you have any questions or want me to slow down a little bit or anything, feel free to interrupt me. We'll start with revenues because everyone likes revenue better than expenses. Through March thirty-first, it's fifty percent of the budget year and the fiscal year is complete, and total budgeted of revenue of twenty-eight point nine million dollars is fifty-nine point two percent collected. So it's ahead of budget. Ninety-four percent of the collections of adware and tax have been received. So we're tracking nicely along with our property tax collections. Sales tax revenue is fifty point one percent received. We're tracking almost exactly with the budget. However, we are decreased about sixteen thousand dollars from prior year. Tomorrow, we will get the new amount from the comptroller, and we'll be watching that, and I'll be updating you on that. Hotel motel occupancy tax is down. It's at forty-three percent collected, and it's about nine thousand dollars less than last year. Water sales now are at forty-five percent of budget, and those usually track lower the first six months of the year, and then, of course, as temperatures get higher and folks need to water their yards, they pick up. Sewer sales similarly are also below budgeted expectations at forty-three percent. Our next big category, sanitation fees, we're a little bit below at forty-seven point seven percent. However, sales are up about fifty-three thousand dollars over last year. Ambulance fees, tracking below budget at forty-one point six percent and below prior year by thirty-two thousand. Intergovernmental revenue has been a surprise for us. We received three hundred and eight thousand dollars in a budgeted revenue from FEMA related to Winter Storm Yuri. ARPA revenue, although we've received three point six million dollars, we can't recognize it as revenue until we actually spend for projects. So far, the council has approved one point three million dollars in ARPA-funded projects, and four hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars of those have been spent in fiscal year twenty-three. Two hundred sixty thousand eight hundred was received from CDBG grant for downtown sidewalks and another sixty-five thousand dollars for the cops hiring grant, along with many other smaller grants that staff has been working very hard trying to find grant funding opportunities for the city. Franchise fees are tracking almost perfect with budget, fifty point four percent and in line with last year. Investment income is way over budget this year. We're earning about four point three eight nine percent at the end of March, and compare that to one point zero zero four percent in March of twenty-twenty-two. So not only has the interest rates went up, but also we have bond funds for the Civic Center project, street improvement project, sewer system improvement project, and grant projects. So the cash available has increased from twelve point five million March of twenty-two to twenty-seven point five million of March of twenty-twenty-three. Miscellaneous receipts, you can see that they're tracking below, and that's related to a big amount that's budgeted for the sale of the lake properties, and since those have been sold, that category will move more in line with budgeted expectations. Fin and forfeiture revenue, which is our court revenues, they are tracking above our budgeted projections at sixty-six point seven percent collected and are increased seventy-three thousand over prior year. License and permit revenue is currently tracking below budget, but the council approves some changes to the fees charged, and as those start rolling in, we're expecting that to track along with the budget. So I'll move over and show you by fund. The general fund, we're at sixty-seven percent collected, notably because we've received most of our tax revenue by this time. Same thing for the debt service fund. The general capital projects fund is below because I mentioned the lake properties. Grant also below because we budgeted for all of the grant revenue related to the different grant-funded projects, and primarily the boating access grant is the largest one of those, and we haven't began construction on that yet. HOT, I mentioned before, is tracking below and then below prior year. The court revenue just looks weird because we financed a software purchase out of there, so it involves some accounting transfers. War Memorial, that's related to interest. Venue project has no budget because we didn't enact that fund until the venue project financing passed, and that fund was created in December. The utility fund, a bit below, but it's expected to catch up as the year goes on. Capital projects is high because of the ARPA projects that were not budgeted for, and then the beautification fund is a bit low because donations are coming in lower this year than they were last year. Moving on to the expenses, although our number one highest budgeted expense is that maintenance expense because of those bond projects, which are sewer maintenance and street maintenance projects, they haven't gotten underway yet. That's not our top spend area right now. Our top spend area is our normal spend area, which is employee services, and that category is tracking below budgeted expectations at forty-two percent. Professional services in line with budget at forty-nine percent expended. Debt service looks low now. That's because we only make payments in February and August. In February, it's primarily interest. August is principal and interest. Both maintenance and capital expenditures below because of the bond and grant-funded projects. Supplies and utilities are also below at forty-seven point three and forty-two point seven respectively expended through March thirty-first, and then travel, education expenditures are just a little above our budget at this time. As far as the funds go, every fund is tracking below budgeted expectations with exception of the HOT fund, and the only reason the HOT fund looks like that is because we had to make a transfer from the HOT fund to the newly created venue project fund to transfer those bond funds over, and that was an unbudgeted expense, and that's why the only ones you see in red there are the HOT and the venue project related to that. An overall twenty-nine point seven percent expended. Wanted to show you our fund balances. Our fund balances are healthy. At the end of fiscal year twenty-two, we had just over twenty-one million dollars in fund balance. We've added about four point six million dollars to our fund balance, and you can see that's primarily from the general fund and the debt service fund, and that's going to be those tax collections that come in, and those funds get funded and don't necessarily line up with the expenditures. So at March thirty-first, we have twenty-five point seven million dollars of fund balance. You can see our target fund balances are all being exceeded. Just quickly about our investments. At December of twenty-twenty-two, we held twenty-five point five million dollars primarily in the investment pools. Those are paying the highest rate, and it's not that much different in March of twenty-three. We've got twenty-seven point five million held primarily again in the investment pools, and you can see the makeup of where our money is. Cash wouldn't normally be that high, but the bond funds for the sewer projects are held in escrow in a bank account. So that's why the cash is higher than it normally would be. And that is all I have on the quarterly financial report. Is there anything that you'd like to know about that I didn't discuss?
Oh, yeah. It's my favorite report for the night.
I guess, can I just stay there for the next one?
Yeah, our next item is a public hearing to hear about some budget amendments, but I thought while you were there, if you could kind of give us a briefing on those budget amendments, and if we have any questions, we could ask.
Sure. Each year, as we put out our March financial statements, that marks fifty percent of the year, and we get a better look at where our budget is.
Right.
And we really drill down and see where we might have missed the marks and things that came along that we didn't plan on, and we clean up the budget. This year, admittedly, is a much more in-depth cleaning than has happened in the past, but this is going to get our budget really in line with our actual spend. So I've just got a little summary of each fund and what the adjustments will do. The adopted budget said that we were going to add forty-eight thousand dollars to the general fund. The amended budget almost adds a million dollars. The revenue is related to the grant funding, the higher-than-expected court revenues, and the interest income. That's what primarily makes up that revenue increase. And then the expenditures are decreased, and there are a lot of ins and outs, but the big story is our payroll. We haven't been fully staffed in public safety and public works, and so we're bringing that payroll back to those vacancies that we had in the first part of the year. And the debt service fund. Interest income is what makes up the increase in revenue, and then the increase in expenditures is related to interest expense. We missed the interest expense in the budget on one of the bonds, the one that we issued in September. So we're talking about adding eighty-four thousand dollars to fund balance, and now with the amended budget, it will be adding a hundred and thirty thousand. General capital projects. Oh, that's, it looks strange because of the bond funds. We budgeted spending all of the bond funds, which the budget brings us down to half a million dollars, and in the amendments, we're adding for some grant revenue, the ARPA revenue, and then also the interest income on the bond projects. And then the expenses, it's also the ARPA-funded vehicles for the police department. So we're bringing down the fund balance here to three hundred and fifty-nine thousand. These funds that we're talking about now don't have a fund balance requirement. It's basically zero. They're held and we try to keep a zero balance. Grant fund. We planned on a drawdown of four hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, and we're adjusting down the Texas Parks and Wildlife grant revenue because that project's not expected to kick off until the fall, and then we're adding the cops grant, sixty-five thousand dollars that was a budgeted, and also twenty-five thousand dollars in opioid settlement funds that were not budgeted. And then we're likewise taking away the capital expenditures for the boating grants, and that's one point five million dollars, and that's primarily what the decrease is. So this fund, we always also try to keep it a zero balance. In the HOT fund, our revenue is tracking a little bit below budgeted expectations, and then our expenditures have that unbudgeted transfer from the HOT fund to the venue project fund. But they also have the venue project fund coming out of the budget, so hundred and sixty-two thousand is roughly what the venue project Civic Center Department cost is. And then the court special revenues, special revenue funds are not changing that much. That's primarily interest and then also higher-than-expected court receipts. War Memorial is all interest, and then there's the venue project. So we transferred over one hundred ninety-nine thousand, almost five hundred thousand dollars from the hotel motel, and then we're expecting expenditures of six hundred and nineteen thousand, five hundred of that roughly being for the Civic Center itself, the renovation of the Civic Center. If there ends up being a deficit in this fund, it will be covered by a transfer from the HOT fund to make it whole. The utility fund is seeing increases primarily on interest, and then the expenditures. The bond funds had to be moved. We had originally put them in the utility projects fund, and I'm glad that you see those beside each other because you see the big change, like five million dollar swing from one to the other, and that's those project funds being moved over to the utility fund instead of the utility capital projects fund. We have several capital projects planned here, and if they do go over budget, then the capital projects fund would be made whole by a transfer from the utility fund to the capital projects fund. And then the last one is the beautification fund, and that one, the revenue is going lower because of the trend of the donations being lower, and truly no change to the expenditures. All in all, we're adding one point three million dollars in revenue. We're also adding four hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars in expenses for a net of eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars more being added to the fund balance than we anticipated when we prepared the budget.
Okay. Great. Okay. So with that explanation, I will open up a public hearing to hear and receive citizen input regarding the twenty-twenty-two, twenty-twenty-three fiscal year budget amendments. So if you would like to speak in favor of our hints, now is your time to participate. So the public hearing is open. If someone would like to comment. I don't see anybody that wants to comment, so I will close that public hearing, and we will discuss and consider with possible action approving an ordinance making those budget amendment adjustments as presented by Roxanna. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the ordinance making those budget amendments.
I have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fourteen is to discuss and consider with possible action an ordinance regarding dredging in Lake Jacksonville. Mr. James, do you want to give us a little, shed a little light?
I hadn't had to talk yet, so you just keep going.
Yeah, just kidding.
Mayor, Council, we did discuss this in our workshop last Thursday. I'll give just a little bit of a consolidated or condensed version of the update that you received Thursday. I think generally speaking, we know what dredging is. It's the removal of siltation, and we do have some siltation buildup in Lake Jacksonville that rears its ugly head when the water's down, and we experienced that last summer with lower-than-normal pool elevation in the lake. So I received personally quite a few requests, came through our office to request dredging, but at this time, ordinance fifteen ninety prohibits such activity on Lake Jacksonville. So with the passage of the ordinance this evening, as well as these policies and general conditions, we would allow and regulate dredging on Lake Jacksonville. So the general conditions, they're on the slide before you, and they're in your packet, but what we're looking to do as we kind of enter this territory is limit active projects to no more than three at any one time, and that permits would be valid for ninety days and that any work would need to be completed within a thirty-day calendar period. De-watering bags would remain or be able to remain on site for up to ninety days post-active dredging. No dredging would be allowed on weekends or holiday weekdays during the busy season as defined as May first through September thirtieth, and that does include the hauling operations as well. The maximum size of dump truck allowed for hauling operations will be limited to seven yard due to the, kind of the capacity constraints there on lakeshore, and that the city must approve such hauling route, and that no spoils may be deposited within the city's inundation easement, which is defined as an elevation of four twenty-two to four thirty-two surrounding Lake Jacksonville or in a floodplain in the proximity to Lake Jacksonville. Also, it requires applicants to receive signed letters of acknowledgement from adjoining property owners. It's not necessarily something that would block a property owner from obtaining a permit, but just letting them know that you have planned dredging activity, apprising them of the fact that you're going through the city's process. So hopefully that limits the questions that make it to City Hall and helps get the word out on dredging. Also, there's definitely an economy of scale when it comes to dredging, so when you talk to your neighbor and telling them that you may plan to dredge, they may have a similar need, and if they can do it all at once, it's more convenient for everybody and would also save some money. As it pertains to fees, we're setting a base permit fee of five hundred dollars and then a volumetric fee set on the number of cubic yards to be removed from the site via hauling operations. There are certain sites on the lake where potentially their removed siltation could be placed above four thirty-two elevation, and hauling operations wouldn't be necessary, but you see a table there before you of a per cubic yard price for hauling operations. The city would require that any contractors engaged in dredging on Lake Jacksonville name us as an additional insured, as well as any of their subcontractors, at a valuation of one million dollars per occurrence. And here's a little bit more on the actual procedure itself. So dredging is regulated by and large by the Army Corps of Engineers and potentially the TCEQ depending on the discharge water, but the owner or the interested party in dredging would essentially contact the city. We would put them in contact with the Army Corps of Engineers. They would submit their request to the Army Corps of Engineers, at which time roughly probably anywhere from thirty to ninety days later, the Army Corps of Engineers would issue a letter in one of three instances. The first being an individual permit would be required. Those largely are for, would probably be for city-sponsored projects requiring the removal of over twenty-five thousand cubic yards of debris or spoils from the lake. We don't anticipate the need for many individual permits. The cost to remove that many cubic yards would probably be in excess of two million dollars and would be prohibitive. The activity may fall under their nationwide permit. Those are for what they consider minor dredging operations under twenty-five thousand cubic yards, or that no permit is required. After receipt of that letter, they would furnish that to the city with their application. If it was option A or B there, I'm sorry, B or C, nationwide permit or no permit, we would essentially issue a permit at the time of permit fees being collected. If it did require an individual permit, that would go before the Lake Advisory Board, as well as the City Council for consideration.
So we've heard a description of the dredging. I will entertain a motion.
And make a motion. We approve the ordinance regarding dredging in Lake Jacksonville.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Mindy Gallit.
Second.
Second by Councilman Rob Gowan. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number fifteen is to discuss and.
Do they need to adopt a policy? Do they need to adopt a policy?
You want a separate motion for that?
It wasn't covered in the first one.
Okay.
Sure.
So, we'll entertain a motion to adopt the policy regarding dredging in Lake Jacksonville.
I'll make a motion that we approve the policy concerning dredging.
Have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae to approve the policy.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Now, is there any discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry also. Now, item number fifteen is to discuss and consider with possible action approving an engineering services contract with Schaumburg &amp; Polk, Inc. for design, bidding, and construction phase services for improvements to Canada Street between South Bolton Street and South Jackson Street.
Yes, mayor and city council, this is something we've been discussing for the last several months in a couple of different workshops and public forums. We're all familiar with Schaumburg &amp; Polk. They're an engineering firm based out of Houston, but with an office in Tyler. They have proposed kind of a four-part professional services agreement to help the city enhance and improve that section of Canada Street, as you mentioned, between South Jackson and South Bolton Street, so closest to kind of the new Super One Foods and kind of the shopping area over there. The four parts are this preliminary design, final design, bidding assistance, and then construction phase services to include inspection and reporting. We are looking to make enhancements for mobility, safety, and public safety response time on this section of roadway. Yet to be determined the exact cross-section or the standard profile throughout that section. We will be working with Tech dot on potential signal upgrades, which could take place both at South Bolton and South Jackson depending on their studies and if they're warranted. This would also require relocation of franchise utilities, potential right-of-way acquisition, and we think overall it's just going to be a great enhancement for the traveling public. The road surface itself is starting to degrade and showing its signs of wear, and Canada Street with Super One Foods is definitely taking a lot more traffic than it used to. It takes about a third of the amount of traffic, as does Tina Street, based on about five-year-old traffic counts. I have to imagine that numbers up. I'm also under the impression or understanding that Super One Foods is going to make a cross-connection internally with the shopping center immediately to their south, and I think, again, that is going to drive more traffic to Canada Street as they use private drives to meander to the south towards Super One Foods and Super Walmart and to Tina Street. So, I think it's an important time to try to get ahead of the increased traffic on Canada Street. So, I'm recommending approval of this proposal not to exceed three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to Schaumburg &amp; Polk.
Okay, thank you, James. So, we've heard that explanation. I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion that we approve an engineering services contract with Schaumburg &amp; Polk on Canada Street project.
Perfect. We have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick. Any discussion, further discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does carry. Item number sixteen is to discuss and consider with possible action approving a personal service contract with Chuck Sampson III P.E. and a construction services contract with Robin Smart for the improvement of various streets.
Yes, mayor, city council, we did discuss several other road sections in addition to Canada Street in the last couple of workshops. Canada Street seemed to be the number-one priority, and from an engineering standpoint, it definitely requires a full plan set. It's going to require geotechnical testing, as well as those different levels of coordination with Tech dot and surrounding property owners. These other road segments, and some that we hope that we can add with available budget, are less intense. They don't require as full of engineering plans. They will still require the geotechnical to make sure that we stabilize the subgrade appropriately, but generally speaking, we're ripping out a road surface, we're replacing a road surface, and tying it into existing drive approaches. So, with that being said, we don't necessarily need full plan documents and bid specs. So, for that reason, staff is recommending that we work toward the improvement of the roads seen on the screen here and other roads based on available budget with Chuck Sampson III, professional engineer, warrant him out not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars. He will help us with our geotechnical testing, further road assessments. I think he spent about five hours in town today assessing roads, as well as with the appropriate application toward each road as we go through with their improvement. Robin Smart is kind of his cohort that does his inspections and quantities and kind of verifies that what we bid is what we receive from the contractors and that they do a quality job. We do anticipate being able to add multiple road segments into this list here. I'll say this, that Chuck Sampson was formerly the city engineer with the city of Tyler, and he continues on a contract basis to manage their citywide street improvement program. So, he has over thirty years in the business of doing this. He certainly knows his stuff. He has experience working with Renissa Wade, and I want to thank her for bringing his services kind of to our attention.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion on the service contract.
I'll make a motion that we approve a personal services contract with Chuck Sampson and a construction services contract with Robin Smart for the improvement of various streets.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Rob Goen.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any other discussion?
How much did that money save us? I mean, several hundred thousand dollars by?
Probably.
Yeah, potentially, and I think the real savings is going to be in, you know, having his expertise in picking the right application for the right road and stretching the dollar on that side.
Good call, Renissa.
And I will also say that I believe we're kind of tentatively planning to have road segments ready to go to bid within about ninety days, and, you know, he's thinking, based on our available budget, we could have six to nine months of construction ahead of us in terms of all these roads. So, maybe a little inconvenience, but it's going to be a lot of improvement around town, so we're excited.
That's great. Did we vote or we didn't vote? Okay, we do have a motion and a second.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number seventeen is to discuss and consider with possible action approval of a plat of the custom coil subdivision.
Yes, mayor, city council, the next two items are kind of joined at the hip. You're going to see the plat on both. Let me get the plat up here. There we go. The plat contains, originally contained just two lots. It now contains three. Lot one has been increased to a total area of just over one point one acres. Lot two is actually reduced in size and now sits at about five point nine acres. And then lot three, which the city owns, was carved out. It contains about five hundred feet of frontage along North Jackson, just east of the former custom coils plant, which is now operating under the ownership of American Custom Coils, Inc., DBA Bowdark Manufacturing. So, Jedco was able to work directly to secure a new operator. That manufacturing plant had gone dark. They've since reopened, I think, added twenty, twenty-five jobs back to kind of the roles, and again, we were kind of able to identify at a staff level that the two acres immediately to their east benefits from sixty-nine frontage and wasn't necessarily needed in their immediate future. And so, as part of the negotiations with them, we were able to carve that out for future sale or lease by the city. So, it's definitely in our interest to approve this plat. Typically, plats of less, four or less lots, I would approve administratively, per the authority given to me by the Code of Ordinances. However, it's been our practice that land that is owned by the city of Jacksonville, when it's replatted, comes before the city council, and the city council only for approval.
So, we're approving the new plat?
That's correct. So, it's the addition of one lot, and then we also increased the land available to the city and owned by the city around the elevated storage tank on North Bolt.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion on that one.
I'll make a motion that we approve the plat of the custom coil subdivision presented by Councilman.
I have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae.
I'll second.
Second by Councilman Rob Goen. Any discussion further? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number eighteen is to discuss and consider with possible action approving a lease with American Custom Coils, Inc.
Yes, mayor, city council, you'll see the same plat here. This is for the lease of just that lot number two, just shy of five point nine acres. It's for a twenty-five-year ground lease at four hundred and fifty dollars per year with an optional five-year renewal. That price to be determined based on the value of the land twenty-five years from now. That's pretty standard of the city's industrial leases up in this part of town. We own about sixty acres. It's gone back and forth from the city to Texas A&amp;M and now back to the city. We feel like this is a good deal, especially in light of the fact that we were able to recapture two acres for future use by the city.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move that we approve a lease with American Custom Coils.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Latitia Horace.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Mindy Gallick. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion carries. Item number nineteen is to discuss and consider with possible action approving a tax refund to CoreLogic of two thousand nine hundred and thirty-four dollars, sixty-two cents submitted by Cherokee County Appraisal District.
Yeah, mayor, city council, nineteen and twenty, pretty standard. We seem to have about one or two of these pop up every year sometime after taxes are paid, but both of them were just collected in error by the appraisal district, or there was some anomaly present, and so they've made formal requests that we rebate the value there on item nineteen, twenty-nine, thirty-four, sixty-two, and number twenty, thirty-one, forty-two, fifty-six.
Okay. So, I'll entertain a motion, I guess, for the
Can we do both of them?
Can we do both at the same time? Can we? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove both of those tax refunds.
I'll make a motion to approve the tax refund.
Approve or disapprove?
We want to approve.
Of both property taxes collected as presented by us.
Perfect. We have a motion by Councilman Tim McRae to approve those refunds.
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Latitia Horace. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that motion does pass. So, that concludes our regular agenda items. Item number twenty-one is open forum for mayor and council. So, if anybody has something they'd like to talk about, now is your time.
Well, thank you, mayor.
Go ahead.
Good evening, everybody. I spoke with the mayor just prior to the meeting and just said I'd like to say a few First off, I just want to say, thank you, Lord. I asked the mayor, I said, is there any, you know, real protocol to how we do this? And he said, no, you just jump right on in. So, I'm going to lead off with, thank you, Lord. I also want to just thank my family for being here, and my family, I cannot tell you, I feel like the most blessed woman in the world. I thank my husband for his support and encouragement. I thank our boys for their support and encouragement. And I tell you, I have the best mom and grandmother that I could ever have asked for. My grandmother is ninety-nine years young
Wow.
and will get us all in line if ever we need to. I have a wonderful mother-in-law who came all the way down from Denver, Colorado, to be here to support me today.
That's great.
I have friends and family that are here from Denver, Colorado, here to support us, and then I have friends and family that are right here in Jacksonville, and I just thank y'all so much for everything. You are truly the wind beneath my wings, and I just, I couldn't do it without you. So, I'm looking forward to everything that we can possibly accomplish, not just in District One, but throughout Jacksonville as a whole, and I thank y'all so much for everything.
Good.
My mom is motioning to me, and one of my best friends, her husband is here from Dallas, Texas, drove all the way down just to be here for tonight's meeting to see me sworn in. So, thank you so much. Thank you so much. Thank y'all.
Oh, yeah. Latitia, on behalf of the council, I think I can speak for all of us. We really look forward to serving with you.
Thank you.
We do.
Thank you.
He's glad he didn't have as many problems with your name as he did with poor Mindy.
I did, yeah. Yeah, exactly. I got it right the first shot.
You did. Way to go. Didn't take you three years.
There you go.
And the next agenda item is?
Does anyone other than Mindy have something that I can talk? Anybody else have anything they'd like to speak on? All right, then we'll go to the last item, city manager's report.
Yes, thank you, mayor, city council. I do want to recognize Victor Entreveros for being here tonight and just thank him for all the hard work he and his crews with Encore have been doing in the light of the storms. I mean, Victor is, you know, night or day, always a text away for me, and does just an excellent job helping us coordinate projects locally and take care of us, and so we appreciate him being here. We really, I can't stress enough how much we benefit from having Encore on Alabama Street in Jacksonville, Texas. That's huge. So, anyway, Victor, thank you for being here and supporting us.
You too.
Just a couple of quick updates, and then we'll get on out of here, but we've really been, seems like kind of the event central lately. We had the barbecue event on Commerce Street, followed up by the taco event, I think, just last weekend. This weekend, of course, we have the Jacksonville Rodeo Tops in Texas. It's their sixty-first year. I know you can get tickets at the Chamber of Commerce just next to Jedco on Commerce Street if you're interested in attending. I think Thursday night's family night, I believe it's free, sponsored by local cowboy church, and then Friday and Saturday, you would have paid admission, so make sure you stop by the chamber to get your tickets for that. As the chief mentioned, we do have the police officers' memorial ceremony taking place Wednesday, May seventeenth at ten a.m. I think it's going to be outside at the public safety complex pending weather, so that's where it was last year. I remember it was pretty warm last year, so hopefully it'll be a little cooler this year. I do want to say, too, to public safety, we mentioned some salary savings, or rather the finance director did, but as of right now, to my knowledge, we're full in terms of both our firefighters and our police officers. So, recruiting efforts by our assistant city manager, our chiefs, and then word of mouth from the officers has done a great job. I say we're full, as the chief would remind me, we're full on paper. We have a couple of recruits still in the academy, so they're not necessarily helping him yet with the workload, but they're being invested in and will soon be turned loose to serve our citizens. Of course, we all know, we have the Thirty-Ninth Annual Tomato Fest just around the corner, Saturday, June tenth. I can't wait to see what's in store for the fortieth, but we look forward to the thirty-ninth. And then we will have another council meeting prior to this event, but it'll be just a couple days before Wednesday, June fourteenth. We'll have a Flag Day ceremony. Dr. Burkett of the Cherokee County Historical Commission does a wonderful job coordinating this every year. It's one of my favorite events. It just feels Americana. It feels so small-town and hometown Jacksonville, so we hope you'll join us in Hazel Tilton Park. We have some really exciting things coming to Hazel Tilton Park soon. This morning, the city closed on the two vacant lots just across the street from Hazel Tilton Park, directly behind City Hall, between Belle Pond and the Clothes Closet. Thank you. So, we have some improvements coming to that, which will also probably be used in a parking capacity. We do have parking challenges, we know that, but those are good problems to have. Of course, we have a new restaurant across from City Hall that seems to be doing really well and taking up some of the parking, but anyway, good improvements coming to Hazel Tilton Park as a whole, and then those two lots being incorporated into it. What we're trying to aim for, and we'll have some renderings released publicly soon, is kind of to create a community gathering place that doesn't require multiple streets to be closed every time. We want to get together, enjoy the outdoors. We plan on having like concerts in the parks, community Christmas tree, choirs, things like that, so really to bring kind of more of those Flag Day ceremony-type events to Hazel Tilton Park, so looking forward to that. Lastly, I'll just say, Latitia, welcome. Met you when I was at Jedco probably four or five years ago, and I can still remember that day well, so I look forward to that. And Councilman Robinson, you'll always be a councilman to me, so thank you so much.
Yes.
Very good. Well, if there's nothing else, we will stand adjourned at seven oh eight. Thank you for your participation in coming tonight.